Councilwoman Mettis?
Here.
Councilman Crowden?
Here.
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Mary Sutcliffe? Rich Erwin?
Here.
Mary Stubber?
Here.
Dan Williams? Here. Tyler Ladder?
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have anybody that signed up for a privilege of the floor?
Right.
Okay. Fred?
I just wanted to let everyone know this Saturday at the recycling center from 9:30 to 10:00, we're going to be giving away our Ripple Rug cat product, but it's also a utility rug for lots of things. We have Amazon returns, so when we get done with the holiday season, we go through everything. So we're cleaning out house, so to speak, and we're gonna have at least 50, maybe 75 or more rugs to give away. So they're great for moving furniture, doing stuff around the house, under your truck, in the yard, or your cat. It's obviously a cat toy, but they're just Amazon returns, so they've gone out and come back, and we only ship once. So we have these to give away to everybody, so they retail for $50 each, and they're free for anyone that wants. So I'm just letting you guys know. 9:30 to 10 o'clock on Saturday.
Okay. Thank you, Fred. Anybody else?
Not that we're saying we want to check.
Okay. We will proceed. You had the minutes, I sent you the draft copy of the March 13 minutes. I also have a hard copy here if you want to refresh your memory. Is there anybody who has any comments or questions or corrections?
The motion we accept.
A motion I've accepted, Bob seconded it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So carry. Assessors report. Marie? You're on.
Not to make anybody upset, but change notices were mailed out from the approved updates that the town had approved to have done. So we've got those out. I attached a couple vouchers that weren't submitted to me prior than today for you guys to look at that had to do with pertaining to the updates. This month is a time when owners review the changes in their assessed value, and if they want to discuss them, they make appointments with me. I have set up some times for appointments that I'll give to you in a minute. And then we can look at what might be wrong in the system about their property that might change what the valuation came out to be. They're called informal reviews. The changes are not what goes on the tentative role at this point. It's what will go on if we don't have anything that has to be changed. But the tentative roles are not out yet. So things like square footage, age, condition of property, those are things that if they feel are inaccurate, we can look at that. I have received some calls and emails, which I've returned, and we've handled and discussed those people, and we'll move forward with whatever needs to be done. Like I said, the values will go on the tentative roles as of May 1st. If someone is still not happy with the values of their property, they then can review all the values of all the parcels in the town after May 1st, because right now it's the old values, it's not the new tentative role values. And then after May 1st, I also would have a list of the sales that were used to determine market value for the properties in Conestown. That won't be until after May 1st either. If they want to come in after May 1st and they feel their valuation is not accurate, they want to come in, they want to bring me some documentation, they can have an appraisal done, they can go in and look on the county site, or come in, there'll be times posted with review times when they can come in and look at the books, the tentative role books, and determine properties that are comparative to theirs. Again, it's usually the most accurate comparative is using age, square footage, condition, that type of thing is what they want to look at. And if they bring those to me, we can discuss it and see if there's anything further that we can do. At that point, if they're still not happy, again, there's board assessment review agreements. And that's the same thing, they want to submit an application to me three days prior, three business days prior to the board assessment review, which is June 5th. And I will submit it to the board, and they can be present. I welcome them to be present, so we can discuss it all together, and then the board makes a decision. So the dates that I am available right now for informal reviews was tonight, and tomorrow from 10 to 1, and the 17th from 10 to 1. The other business that we've had, that's going on, is that we now have a list of what the state has approved for enhanced star exemptions. So I just have to get those into the system to be renewed.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You have a motion to accept Marie's report?
I make a motion.
Motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry. Code enforcement.
Okay, let's see. We currently have 44 open permits, about half a dozen expired permits, which I'm working on getting renewed, three active enforcements. Started doing some short-term rental inspections and permitting. So so far, we have kind of one permit issued. I've done four inspections so far, and it's looking like there are probably about eight or 10 right off the bat. Past month, we had two issued building permits, a search, one short-term of a permit, couple building inspections, several pre-work or site visits, two no-permit visits, three follow-ups, and one fire safety inspection. How many short-term rental applications did we receive? I think I have four, well, three complete. Well, let me take back, two, three. I have five complete and maybe another two or three that are in some state of not enough information. Like I said, I think we'll probably wind up with around 10 to a dozen right off the bat, and then whatever else happens through the season.
Okay. I mean, we're not giving it away who you went to, but were they pretty much in good shape, or did you have a few?
Fire safety issues. One had a handrail that needed to be replaced. One has a swimming pool that needs a better locking mechanism on the gate. Kind of small safety violations. One had a bedroom in a basement with no second form of egress, so that bedroom's gonna be removed.
How do you remove a bedroom? I'd be a wise ass.
You may hit something else. Take the bed away.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have a motion to accept the code enforcement officer's report?
Motion.
Bob makes the motion. Kelly seconded it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So carry. Town clerk's report?
All right. So we had one paid-in-full water district payment and two paid-in-full sewer district payments. There were also two partial payments for water district, but for some reason, it didn't actually generate those on the report.
Okay. Motion to accept town clerk's report.
I'll make it.
Kelly and Bob, you're next. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Carry. Diane?
I have funded $1,460,132.83. There are 195 from pay tax relief, and March penalties were $1,264.10.
Motion to accept the tax collector's report?
I'll make the motion.
Second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Carry. I guess you're gonna have to be Travis's report for the sewer district operator.
That's okay. The average daily flow rate of the month of March was 3,302 gallons. The heating system is operational with no issues being noted. They claim the flow meter boom. Protein levels at 50%. They've submitted the 2022 reconciliation to the DEP, which has been accepted. Kinsley Power Group was onsite to perform die test on the generator at the main pump station. They advised they would reach out with next steps moving forward. Titan Drilling was onsite to service potable water system. They changed the UV bulb as well as the inline filters. If there's any questions, reach out to Travis.
Okay. And he told totally last week that they'll be inspecting everybody's system in the next couple of weeks. And then they'll select the, supposedly every third or every fourth year, they're going to be pumped out. So they're gonna decide, most likely, the people that are full-time residents will be pumped out. Okay. Motion to accept the sewer district operator's report? I'll take that as a motion, and I'll take that as a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry. Kim, historian's report?
Great. Since I was last here, we have two historical markers in production. They're not in hard rock anymore, in production. One is being made in Ohio, and that is the Peter Cashman one, and the other is locally being made at Catskill Castings. That is where the former Manic Hill Creamery. When I checked last week, they were 10 to 12 weeks out in production time. I think we'll get the one from Catskill Castings a little bit faster. But once we get those back, then we will talk about having unveilings for those. I'm working on some separate historical research projects with individuals. And the other thing I wanted to mention is that the Historical Society continues to have regular speakers. And coming up in May, we have the Catskill geologists, Robert and Johanna Titus, on May 16th over at the church will be giving a presentation on Conestown in the Ice Age. So that should be very interesting. And on April 22nd, I will be going to someplace Fonda for a historian's conference for the local Association of Public Speakers.
You didn't mention the first annual meeting.
Oh, we celebrated our first birthday on April 3rd as a Historical Society. We have 26 people, I think, actually present. And we had a great presentation on the Mandor family by a local historian, Richard Sears Walling, out of Stanford. So we're working to bring in a variety of speakers and a variety of interests from across the area.
It was very nice. Good job.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion. Second.
I'll second.
Second by Lori. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Just trying to make it.
All in favor say aye instead of hide. Okay. Highway Superintendent's report?
So we got, obviously, salted and sanded quite a few ice storms during the month of March. We brought our excavator in, did some minor major repairs, kind of mixed it both, getting it ready. Was actually ditching today, so working good. Put potholes a couple times. We had the falls from stone up to Beale Road that pike the bottom router out of it, and it happened right after that bigger snowstorm. We tried to get it passable and safe for traffic, and hopefully by the end of the month, we had a change. We also had two 10-wheeler, two of our big trucks go down during that very big storm. I really wanted to stress that the guys did a great job, because it was a really hard hit in that situation with that much snow. The one truck is fixed, the other truck, actually, I think the pump was finished today. I drove the pump quick, is what it was, to wait for parts. Purchased a new pole saw, a new lightweight chainsaw. The old pole saw seized up, probably. It'll be aiding us in safely removing high branches. We've been using the bucket truck a little bit. The brush tractor's been working great. Naturally, the last time it went out, we had a couple weeks spraying in it, but obviously, it's under warranty, they're coming to fix it on Wednesday, so.
For the second time?
Yeah. When it worked, it worked great, but they're gonna get it right this time, I'm sure of it.
Because they don't want to keep coming at us.
No, I don't want them to keep coming.
No.
That pretty much sums it up, I think.
Okay. Motion to accept the highway superintendent's report? I'll make it.
I'll second it.
Yeah, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So carry. All right. The county report, I'm going to be very brief, unless somebody wants to go longer. No, okay. Now, really, what I have to say is that there's a couple things going on that we're working on, which will be very good for Skerritt County in terms of, I'm not giving it away, more appealing for visitors to come and stay here. Not live here necessarily, but visit. And there'll be more on that in the next two weeks, but that's been keeping a lot of my time going. So would somebody like to accept that supervisor's abbreviated county's report?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion from Lori, a second from Bob. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving along to town business. I sent you the February supervisor's budget statement, draft of it. I also have the printed copy here if you want to refresh your memory. But it looks good to me, so if you guys don't have any objections, or if you do, let's talk about them or make a motion.
I'll make the motion. Would you accept it?
Okay. Second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? So carry. Okay. This is a budget amendment. We didn't do one last month, didn't really have that much going on. But these are just routine things. The big ticket item, of course, is the big piece of equipment that we just got, the boom mower. And we moved money out of the NIE class capital equipment fund for the highway and moved that into the highway department's budget or fund or anyway, had NBT, so we can write a check for that, $172,000 and change. So that's what that's all about. That's accounting for when the money went from one account to another. But there's no added expense here, so if anybody had a heart attack on that, not necessary. Oh, and the other one is the $9,579. We received a check from Western Catskills. They did some work on somebody's house as part of a CDGP program. And those aren't really grants. They are, but they call them a loan, five-year forgivable loan. And every year you're into it, they forgive 20% of the amount. Okay. Well, this person passed away two years ago, so the balance left that was owed was $9,579. And when the estate sold the house to another party, they had to pay off what was due. And I never saw estate actually send money, didn't ask for it, but they sent it to us, and we have to hold it in a special account. If we have any more CDBG programs, we'll use it then. In the meantime, it'll continue to accrue interest. That's, that's noteworthy. Will we do a roll call? Does anybody have any comments, questions?
Nope. We're straightforward.
Let's do a roll call.
Supervisor Federice?
Aye.
Councilwoman Fancher? Councilwoman Mettis?
Aye.
Councilman Crowden?
Aye.
Councilman Smith?
Aye.
Okay. Next subject is property tax assessments that Marie had talked someone about, but I wanted to add to that too, because I heard there's certain concerns about the process for the tax assessments. And Marie, don't hesitate to correct me if I say something wrong, you're the expert here. We did one five years ago. Some people are concerned, thinking that their taxes are gonna go up dramatically. That could not be more false. Your taxes are not going up dramatically, unless you put a big improvement on your house, then yeah, they are. But we're required to do those every five years. We did one five years ago, and the taxes did not go up dramatically.
No, that's four years.
Four years? Okay. Thank you. See, I totally jumped in. And your taxes did not go up dramatically at all. It was business as usual, because what drives your tax bill is not necessarily directly to your assessment. Your assessment goes up 20%, doesn't mean, it's like sales tax, your property tax is going to go up 20%. What drives it is the process of making a budget that this town board does, or any town board does. They will determine what funding they need to run the town for the coming year. Then they determine, and I say they, because we're not the only one, this is the way the process works everywhere. And what they do is look at all the sources of income that we would anticipate. In our case, it would be chips, money, sales tax revenue, mortgage tax revenues, and a lot of smaller things that, but they add up to. Then we look at the balance where we need to assess or do the levy, the property tax levy. And that's like, last year, I think it was about $500,000. And that was, I don't even know what the mill rate is when we do this. We say this is what we need, and this is what it is. And when you judge whether a levy goes up or down, it isn't by your individual tax rate. It is based on what your levy was. And the number that it comes out to, just to pick a number to make it easy, $1,000. And now it's $1,020. Well, it went up 2% or something like that. It's not what the number is. And I know that's a popular misconception, a lot of people have it, and it's just not true. And some people question the numbers that they came up with. That's why we have a process that the state has us do in terms of grieve. But we also, to make it fair, you have to have an occasional revaluation. And you have to do that, because maybe some people are not paying enough or paying too much. That's why you take another look at it every four or five years. And I think that's the second one since I've been in this job that we had four years ago. This will be the third. And I've heard the same things within the past, but it's not the way the process works. I even heard somebody put on Facebook, nobody talked to me, though, you know, it's always Facebook. Well, that's because they cut taxes so much over the last few years. It's not true. That's nothing to do with it. And by the way, I don't want to find the document here that I put together. Just in the last four years, everybody seems to be concerned about the taxes being too low, which I never heard back then, but now they want them to go higher. And I'll say something about that too. But the levy from 2019 to 2023 went up $35,000, about, an average of about $9,000 or so rounded out, or an average of 1.59%. So we did invest. Now, there is a tax cap at 2% per year. So if we went up to the tax, we're talking, like, the difference is maybe $1,200, $1,400, something like that. It's not a lot of money. So to make the assertion that these assessments, which are totally unrelated, have anything to do with prior levies is just not true. And that's the levy. And for those who are concerned about what we should be spending more, we've gone up in that four-year period of time, almost 14%, an average of 3.5%. So we are spending money. We are investing it, if that's what you want to tie this into. And when you tie it into this, I mean, I personally, and I'll let the board members speak for themselves, I am really proud of where we are right now. Really proud. I look, the highway department, this is my 10th year, is the best I've seen since I've been here. Great crew. We're paying them a competitive, in fact, around the county, it's a little bit better than competitive. We're paying them a good wage. Some people like to complain about the equipment, well, that's an old complaint. You look at the equipment that we have now, we've just invested, like, in the boom mower. We bought a tractor last year, or was it the year before? We've been buying the smaller trucks to get around, and they've been very economical and handy. I think our department right now will stand up to anyone. Can we spend more money or invest it wisely? Yes, we're gonna continue to build an capital equipment fund like we have. We're gonna add to it, because things get old, and we will be ready for it. But I just don't know why some people, I just don't know why some of the complaints are, well, if you had kept taxes higher, my property taxes would build up. Totally, totally wrong. Did I leave anything else?
Can I add?
Yeah? Go ahead.
I just want everybody to know, assessed values have nothing to do with any levies or anything that the town needs. An assessor doesn't even look at that when it comes to putting a market value assessment on a property. We don't look at that. We look at the sales of a property and go from there. It has nothing to do with the town's budget. I haven't looked at the town's budget. I don't know what they need. I don't come to the meetings every month. I do my job as to, the state says that if we're all gonna be equally assessed, we do 100% valuation or get as close as we can to it of what the sales have been in the past five years. Now that said, again, anybody that feels there's something wrong with their property, they need to contact me, because I'm more than happy to look at what we have in our system and care to what is there. It's more like, I can add one thing. If we continue not to go down to lower than 100 and way lower than 100% assessed value, that then means that the towns might have to up their tax rates just to make up the difference of what they need to make the government run. If we keep it at where it is, we'll be more of an even flow of what it has been since they started. And I believe it was in 2010 when they first did their big major revaluation. So that brought the tax rates down way low after that. But if we continue to go down in our equalization rate of market value to assessed value keeps going lower, the tax rates are gonna start climbing up again. And it's not gonna be any more beneficial to anybody.
If I could add to that, as you said, you don't look at the budget. You need to live here, so you don't even care about what the budget is and what we're spending. The point is, the board doesn't look at your assessments and say, well, how's this tie out to the budget? They come together at a different point.
Right.
So.
Can I ask a question?
Well.
Oh, sorry.
He was ahead of you.
Sir, carry.
My question is, so we got the letter, blah, blah, blah. It said 95%, I believe.
Right, yeah, it is.
If we just did one in four years, I don't understand why it's not at 100. What's the benefit to that? Can I explain that?
The benefit was, right now, we really felt we needed to do some more look at the sales. There wasn't enough time, and the state accepted our 95. 100% would have brought, if we used what we had determined with what we were looking at, it would have brought everybody's assessments up even more. So we tried, we're trying to, this is just an update this year. We're going to try to relook at things and get them more in line accurately.
Right.
And just let everybody, I didn't do this all on my own, we brought someone else in to work with me on it. So it wasn't just solely my decision on things like that.
Yeah. There's probably nothing we can do about it, but obviously, this is affected by these flack of sales that we've had.
Well, that's the next thing I'm gonna tell you.
But that, we use sales back from way back in 2018.
Oh, you did?
Yes. We go five years back.
Okay. And I'll get to you, Fred. If we didn't do that, let's just say we did the last year.
It was higher.
I have, I get a report from the, from the, all the supervisors, we get a report for their towns. This is scary. The sale price, in other words, what they sold properties for versus what the book valued, sort of full market value in 2003, two rather, up 81%. So I am so happy that it's not just a one year, and it's a, it's a more of a five-year average. Otherwise, again, no, it wouldn't made a, made of a difference, but I know people get emotional when they, except when it's time for someone to give them a check if they sell. But that's fine. Fred?
That actually kind of covered my question. I was really going to reference the pandemic surge in pricing and how that was going to be affecting what people would pay now, because it's equalizing out now. People are now going back to normal pricing.
And we recognized that, and there were some parcels that we were able to take out of our sales comparables, just because we knew that it was astronomical. They were ridiculous.
Yeah, outliers.
We had 20, I'm sorry, we had 43 sales totally, arms-length sales, $6,860,000. That's unbelievable. But, all right. Anyway, that's all I have to say about that. And the other thing I would, I have one more thing to say. If you think something's not right, pick up the phone and ask. You're not going to get your answer on Facebook. Pick up the phone.
I got something that's not right. So people that got the $6 million. Let's figure out a way to get a piece of their $6 million. Don't leave me alone.
We could get away.
Figure out who they are selling your gravel to.
That's good. Thank you. All right. We'll talk a little bit about the Couchman House. We did have some exciting developments. The electricians came in, they put in a new panel. They checked out the wiring, and as far as they're concerned, they didn't see anything that was noteworthy that they, they thought we should address. They called the inspector in, because that's the way the process, you can't do, you kind of inspect your own work. And I got a text, not a text, but an email from NICE, I guess last week. And they said, we haven't heard from the inspector yet. I contacted the electrician, and the electrician said, he said he was there last Tuesday. Well, no, he wasn't. Or at least there's nothing. Usually, I'm told they got to put some kind of tab or something on the box outside.
Sticker.
Sticker, yeah. And I didn't see it. So they're working that. It's a temporary glitch, but I, I, we're on the way. And I'm excited about that. Now, there's a couple, now, there's a sequence of things that we want to do. And number one on that list, of course, was the electric, because that ties into a lot of other things. We still have some money in the account for that, for the Couchman House. And I put in for a grant, fingers crossed, for $220,000 to do a lot of additional work. That's winding its way through the process. I was told there's a lot of other needy people that are also applying, so there's no guarantee. I'm going to say it's 50/50 at best. Though it's with Congressman, Congresswoman Stefanics office, and I'm going to see her this week, and I'm going to remind her.
Who said?
Well, they said not, that hopefully, it was supposed to be March 31st that we would get our answer. Yeah. But nobody got an answer on anything. We're competing against a couple other Scarry County entities, but I'm hoping one wanted like $12 million for a sewer district, another one wants a new firehouse. So when they get, she gets through them and she says, well, I got another couple hundred thousand dollars left to give, we fit right in. That's what I'm hoping. We'll see. We'll see. But I'll remind her when I see her on Thursday.
Monday. No, I'm going to see her Thursday.
Yeah.
Thursday.
No, this. Okay. So that's where we are on that, and then there'll be work to be done. And for instance, we're going to remove the brush that's there, and we talked about that, but I talked about the Tyler. He had a better idea than cutting it. He said, bring in a machine and rip them out right from the stump. I mean, cut them, but then rip them out from the stumps.
Get rid of them.
Yeah, just get rid of it, and you never have to worry about them growing back again.
Be done.
Yeah. I guess in the next month or two, we'll do another volunteer cleanup day. I, I went looking around there last week, and those two rooms up there, the storerooms, playrooms, whatever they were, that's where we'll focus on. But I think we probably will be able to fill up one more container. Last container had a lot of cement blocks there. The tipping fee was like $1,400. But we had to get rid of them, so it was the thing to do. So, and that's the Couchman House. The last thing I have is the grass cutting bids, or I should say bid, because we only received one, for the parks, cemeteries, town properties. Would you care to open that up?
Rendler Landscaping in Roxbury. The park is listed as $3,300 from May to September, and additional $1,650 for October. Firehouse, $2,500 May to September, and additional $1,000 for October.
Wait, can we go back? Is he saying $3,300 a month or for the season?
I would have. I want to say that's for the season. It doesn't specify.
I'll go out and cut it if it's going to be that much. I bet I'd get a couple volunteers for that kind of work.
Just thinking about retirement.
More.
All right.
Town Hall, $500, May to September, $200 for October. Sewer District, $2,000, May to September, $1,000 for October. Former Town Garage, $1,000, May to September, and $500 for October. Cemeteries, $3,000, May to September, $1,500 for October. The brush hogging for the sewer district says $1,000 per time for, so there's a group seven and a group eight for the sewer district, and group eight is listed as $350 per time. And then the water district is $250 per time.
Though this may be the sole source that we receive, that does not mean, as we say clearly, we reject the right to, we reserve the right to reject any or all bids. Maybe the people who spent all that money on those houses would be well paid. It's like, that would happen to him. And I contacted, if I didn't give back, that's a potential bid yet.
The one next. Not the one next. The one next.
It's not like it was high. Just believe in order. I would suggest we table this until we can compare it to last year's and maybe see if we can get multiple bids.
We have to start May first, though, so either we have a special meeting or we'll table this and conduct our business.
Yeah.
Or we'll find a way to make it work.
Yeah.
But I can't wait till next meeting.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. We can get together or, you know, like I said, do it on the phone and make it official at the next meeting.
No, this is next. Per month, it's not double, it's like quadruple. No. We paid $9,000 last year for the season.
Yeah.
Plus the extra work we gave at the Couchman House, because that came later. Like a contract like that?
I'd like to look at that one.
I'm sure you would.
Just glance at it. It was kind of confusing as you read it. Part of it sounded cheap and part of it sounded expensive, but it was broke down weird.
Yeah, cemeteries are a pain in the neck to do, but they're still not bad, are they?
Yeah. I'm surprised there was only one, too.
Yeah, I have two. We only got two last year. Yeah, he was one. Yeah, plus this guy was one.
No. I don't know.
You know Tyler and Andy.
Andy is the one, too.
We had last year.
It was probably one and Andy Federico.
This guy and Andy. He admitted, I told you something right there. What's that? The guy that did it last year. Did it for two years. He said he loved the work, then once he called me and said, I'd like to see a bid.
Yeah.
Really good sign.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah, it is.
They do a lot of other work around here, too, though. I see even a lot of private residences, so it's not like they're not coming over here with their equipment.
No. And they do a nice job. All right, we're going to.
I'd like to table that and investigate, and, you know, just ask him if he doesn't want a bid. I mean, if he told you he was sending one and now we don't have it for the opening, it almost makes me think maybe he got lost.
But I sent it, I was called, and I sent it an email saying, I haven't gotten your bid yet, and I haven't responded. Email didn't get lost.
No, probably not.
Just tell me, you know, you're not interested. That's all. All right. What we'll have to do is we'll table this, but we'll have to come to a decision before the, before the meeting.
Do I have for October, half of?
No, we, but we do ask them for, we cut it through the middle of October, but, yeah, what I'm saying, what do you got for a price for October, but half of what the rest of it is. Yeah, if that's, if it's for the whole summer, unless you're doing that monthly. Well, you can hit the gravy train with us.
It's not going to happen.
That's all I have. You always have to fill that.
Or else we serve you this morning.
Yeah, all right. Any board member input, comments, questions?
I have nothing. Bob, Lori?
Okay.
Okay. Then entertain a motion to review the invoices.
All like that?
All second. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Anybody who wants to? Welcome to hang around, but we're not going to conduct any further.